This meeting will come to order. This is a regular session of the Bloomington Common Council for Wednesday, the 17th of June, 2020. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Rollo.
Here.
Scambleri.
Here.
Rosenbarger.
Here.
Sims.
Here.
Bollin.
Here.
Piedmont Smith.
Here.
Flaherty.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Sandberg.
I think she's still on her way in, but, uh... Okay, well, we have a quorum. This is a summation of the agenda for this evening. We will hear approval of minutes. Actually, we have no minutes for approval. We'll go to reports from council members, followed by the mayor and city offices, from council committees, and members of the public. There'll be a 20-minute period for comments. We will have appointments to boards and commissions, followed by legislation for a second reading and resolutions, which include ordinance 2011, an ordinance recommending that portions of the Bloomington Municipal Code be temporarily suspended due to the ongoing public health emergency, and resolution 2009 authorizing the allocation of the Jack Hopkins Social Service Program Funds for the year 2020 and related matters. There is no legislation for first reading. We will have a second period of public comment, 25 minutes for items not on the agenda. Uh, we will hear matters of council schedule, and we will adjourn for what will be, uh, long looked forward to council recess. With that, let's go to reports from council members. I'm going to start with the person who is, uh, last on my screen, Councilmember Sandberg. I'm glad to see you made it back in.
Yes, I am back.
If you have a report, please go ahead.
I, I do not. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Rollo. Uh, you're muted.
I am. No, I'm not. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, two brief items. One is, uh, I wish to go on record, uh, in supporting, uh, Randy Paul's suggestion or request, uh, some weeks back to continue zooming, uh, our, our meetings for the public, particularly those who have physical challenges. Uh, I think it is an excellent idea, uh, despite some concerns of security, uh, and disruption. I think those can be overcome, and, uh, I hope we can do this, uh, maintain zooming when this body assembles in place again in the council chambers. Uh, my second comment is just a general comment to say that I'm quite distressed. I think a number, a lot of people are, uh, according to polls, for our country, uh, hoping that we will address challenges, uh, particularly regarding race and inequality, including, uh, the grotesque economic disparities that exist in our, in our country. What makes me worried is that we have a very polarized country, uh, and this is made worse by various media that caters to polarities, and probably, uh, made worse by social media, and results in, uh, echo chambers that it creates. But I think this conversation is very much needed. I fear that if it doesn't occur and we can't come to, uh, agreement, uh, then violence will probably continue. And I would suggest that this conversation needs to be based on objectivity, needs to be based on the ability for people to speak without being bullied. Uh, it needs to be based upon statistical data and other types of data that we can, we can all agree on, and to move forward on public policy that works in, in everyone's interest. So that concludes my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
I have no comment.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Flaherty.
No report tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Rosenbarger.
No report. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Councilmember Sims.
Thank you. I had to unmute myself. Um, I have a couple of brief comments. Uh, first, I'd like to join my colleague, Councilmember Rollo, uh, with regard to, um, maintaining virtual, uh, platforms for meeting, um, Zoom as we move forward, um, for the reasons that he stated. But I would also like to, to throw my hat in there that, and many of us have talked about this, to keep the ASL people, the American Sign Language people, um, in order to translate in that regard. Um, and I hope we can work that out and make that so, um, even in virtual meetings. Um, the second brief comment is, um, just something I would like for the public to think about, and many of us have been thinking a lot about, um, our social situation. But, uh, another thought for the, for the folks out there and for my colleagues. If in fact we can view a police officer kneeling on a man's neck in broad daylight to the point of death, I want everyone to think about what could possibly be happening across, in America, in our human resources offices, in our hospitals, in our doctors' offices, in our classrooms, in our banks. Uh, there are many other, um, areas that we can have this discussion. Obviously, uh, we're going to start, at least in this area, with local law enforcement, which is a segue, but I'd like everyone to think about, um, those other examples that I just gave. Uh, lastly, tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM, the city councils Public Safety Standing Committee will have a hearing. Um, starts at 7 o'clock. Um, we are hoping for it to last for a couple hours and get as much public comments, um, that we can. I would like to mention that on those standing committees are my colleagues, Councilmember Susan Sandberg, Councilmember Sue Scambleri, and Councilmember Isabel Piedmont Smith, um, formidable group that I'm proud to be working with. Now, our meeting tomorrow night, we, our only intent is to receive information from the public. Um, I hope, there's been a little bit of misinformation, so I hope no one is expecting, as I've seen before, a robust dialogue. Um, that will not occur, at least tomorrow. We will have it in the future, but I don't think tomorrow. There will not be a question and answer period. Uh, we just simply want to receive and hear what the public thinks, uh, with regard to local law enforcement. And we have not invited any city staff, um, to join us. So we want to keep this as generic as we can in order to get information from the public. And I want everyone to understand that once we compile that and analyze it a little bit, or transcribe it is a better word, it is our hope that we can use this information as a basis for considering or possibly making changes in the future, moving forward. Um, and we'll talk a little bit more about that tomorrow when we start, but those are my comments for the evening, and thanks for asking, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Scambleri.
I have no report this evening. Thank you.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, I just wanted to, um, remind the public that Black Lives Matter Bloomington is having a Juneteenth celebration, um, on Friday, June 19th. Juneteenth is actually tomorrow, but June 19th at Reverend Butler Park from 4:00 to 8:00 PM with all social distancing and, um, mask requirements, recommendations, uh, of the CDC in place. Um, and you can find out more about that, and they do ask that you register so they can have enough, uh, food and masks available, um, at, um, uh, Black Lives Matter Bloomington on Facebook. So if you just search Black Lives Matter Bloomington, you'll see their Juneteenth celebration. It should be some, some great artists and speakers involved, so, um, hope to see some of you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to clarify, the 19th is a Friday.
Yes. Friday.
You said that it was, is the event tomorrow or Friday?
It's Friday.
Okay, thank you.
But Juneteenth is actually on the 18th, but their event is going to be.
I thought it was the 19th. Okay, my bad.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I want to echo Councilmember Sims' announcement. I want to thank the Public Safety Committee for, uh, beginning the process of taking up the complicated issue of policing tomorrow night. I want to urge everyone to attend. Uh, we do go on recess after this meeting tonight, although there will be committee meetings such as Public Safety and such through the recess, but our next regular session will not be until July 22nd. Um, it is my intent that we find a way to integrate Zoom or the equivalent meeting protocol, a remote meeting protocol into our meeting procedures, uh, as soon as we can after recess. Um, questions of accessibility such as Zoom, ASL, um, have already begun. We've already been discussing those items internally between leadership and council staff. We are actively looking for ways to make the, to keep the council as accessible as it has been and to make it as accessible as possible. So if, uh, anyone has, uh, thoughts on those issues, uh, we welcome them. I certainly do. Please, uh, email bolland@bloomington.in.co. Um, so with that, we now go to reports from the mayor and city offices. I see Mayor John Hamilton is here. Mr. Mayor, would you like to, uh, take it away?
Thanks very much. It's good to see you all. Uh, I'll try to blast through a few things tonight, um, and then hand it off to Beverly Calendar Anderson, who's going to provide an update on the Social Services Working Group. Uh, first, some updates on, uh, COVID-related, coronavirus-related issues. You all know the county health department ordered last Friday that we would shift into stage four. Basically, uh, the state's established stages. That means, according to that order, bars are allowed to open now, uh, as of Friday, up to 50% capacity. Playgrounds, courts, uh, sports leagues allowed to function, restaurants back to 75% capacity, retail stores 100%. Uh, we did, from the county, they did choose to keep the social gathering level uh, below 100 people or fewer, uh, as what's approved for private social gatherings. Um, we have had a recent modest bump in cases and fatalities in the county. Um, it is important to note that the county death rate is still about one-half of that of the state uh, average, uh, as well as the national average, but I am still very concerned. Um, and in particular, we have, uh, the big fact of thousands and thousands, tens of thousands of students likely to come back in August, um, as they come back from around the country and the world. Um, we're going to need to be very vigilant. I want to let you know that there is discussion going on about potentially, um, particular rules or approaches that may be different from what we have right now, kind of for that August to November period, when we're going to have a fairly different kind of, uh, environment for the disease and for our community. So we will be, um, in, more in touch on that as we look at those possibilities. Effective Monday, uh, this coming Monday, uh, the city is going to implement a mandatory mask policy for all of our employees. We've had a very strongly encouraged policy and provided free masks and had a lot of compliance, but not 100% compliance, and we've decided, uh, with all the exertions, we really need to move to a mandatory policy for all of our employees whenever they are within six feet of each other, or the public, uh, or may likely be that way, will be providing those masks, and that will be effective starting Monday. Just so you know, our Parks Department did extraordinary yeoman's work to get all the playgrounds sanitized, cleaned, a couple dozen playgrounds and fitness stations, uh, in record time for Friday opening. There are public restrooms now open since Monday, uh, at three parks, Alcott, Bryan, and Lower Cascades, uh, 13 hours a day. Uh, we plan to open two more, uh, public restrooms in Building and Trades and Butler Park at Stage Five. Those have been a little more difficult. Uh, we don't have the staffing to cover those that we do in the other three parks to continue to sanitize those, uh, throughout the day like we will in the currently open restrooms. Um, let me turn just to some very other brief updates before I hand it over to, um, to Beverly, uh, Calendar Anderson. Uh, just very quick updates on a few items. One, the Waldron, um, we have asked a internal team, an internal team to focus on some short-term questions and opportunities. Short-term meaning kind of the next 12 months probably-ish, uh, to identify, uh, what it means to have that building back, what kind of uses it might be, uh, offered for, used for over the next, uh, six, 12 months. Uh, we appreciate Councilmember Sandberg serving on that internal team at your direction, uh, to just kind of identify in the short term what we can do. Uh, I would expect that in a few months, in a few weeks or months, we will ask a longer-term group, community-focused group, community-based group, to really help analyze the longer-term uses of that building, uh, which we expect to come into possession, uh, repossession of in, in August. Um, and thinking more broadly, longer term, uh, what's the right use of that? So just wanted to let you know that, and of course, take questions on all these. A quick convention center update. You all know, uh, the revenues in food and beverage have been dramatically declining, uh, in, in, since the closures, uh, to half-cut. Uh, and of course, the convention industry is upside down right now, so, uh, collaborating with our county colleagues and you and all, we, we expect to kind of take a pause on any activities related to planning, uh, for that convention center until the end of the year, and we'll come back to revisit, look at revenue, look at, uh, the industry and such. But just wanted to let you and the public know, we'll take a six- or, six- or seven-month, uh, break on that. Uh, right up the street from that, the Hospital Reuse Committee met last night, uh, with a public session. Uh, about 200 people joined that, uh, with dozens of questions asked and answered, uh, including online. Uh, that is a big conversation that has begun about that, uh, that location. I would encourage anybody interested in that, go to Bloomington Hospital site, all one word, S-I-T-E at the end there, dot com, uh, to look at the, um, tons of material. Please give feedback on that. Um, a similar big conversation is starting tomorrow night about the Seven Line. That was one of the four major trails, uh, invested and funded through the bicentennial bond that we did in 2018. That Seven Line, the, uh, plan for a, uh, protected bike lane, enhanced bus service, enhanced, um, pedestrian access from the Beeline East on Seventh Street all the way to campus at Woodlawn, and eventually, a couple miles farther than that, all the way to the far east side of town. Uh, that begins with a public, uh, meeting tomorrow night, uh, as well. I think that's at 6 o'clock. Um, and please jump online with that too on the city. I want to thank the council for your consideration of the signage changes to help our, uh, retail businesses in particular, uh, pick back up and get where they're going, and the exciting Kirkwood Pilot Project this weekend, which I hope many of you will enjoy. Uh, and I finally want to, uh, thank and appreciate the consideration of the, uh, the, um, the discussion and the consideration of all of our public safety efforts. Um, Councilmember Sims, uh, referred to his meeting, uh, the committee meeting that will be happening tomorrow. Um, it is always a good thing as a community to, to review what we are doing, how we are doing in all ways, and especially around racial justice, yes, around public safety and beyond, as Councilmember Sims stated. These are key issues for all of us to welcome and, uh, and, and support. Conversations, reviews, questions, suggestions, changes, and, and I look forward to that. Um, besides the council committee meeting tomorrow, there will be a Public Safety Review Board, uh, meeting early next week. Some of you know that got, uh, disrupted last evening, uh, technologically, and, uh, so that will take place again next week. Um, and I look forward to working with all of you to keep, uh, getting our city better. Um, I'm going to hand it over to Beverly Calendar Anderson for an update, and then happy to take questions on that or any other matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Hamilton. Uh, I am Beverly Calendar Anderson. I am the Director of Community and Family Resources Department, and I'm just going to give you a brief update before you all leave out on your break, um, of what the Social Services Working Group has been up to. So I'm going to share my screen, if you think. Okay, and so some of this is a repeat of what the, uh, committee talked about two weeks ago, but I think it was about two weeks, but I will go through that part very quickly. Um, as you know, these are the members of the group. They have been a great group to work with. Um, just very proactive in doing everything, and so we had John Barrett, a Diane Bissell, Ephraim Pfefferman, Tina Peterson, and Dan Smith. Um, when we prioritize the areas of emergency food provision, an isolation shelter for persons experiencing homelessness, childcare for essential workers, and personal health and safety. And in the areas of, of food provision, um, we have been meeting with each of these, uh, food provision, childcare, and isolation shelter. We have been meeting with, uh, providers of these services, sometimes weekly, um, sometimes every two weeks. With the shelter, isolation shelter, we meet daily. Well, now, we're down to three days a week, but we were meeting daily. Um, the Community Foundation is serving as a navigator for childcare, has been helping, uh, those, those essential workers who are needing childcare find the appropriate services. Also has helped with some funding in that area. Um, the isolation shelter is serving a six-county air, area. They have averaged about one guest a week. There was one week where there were like three guests in the shelter at one time. Um, but of, in all the weeks that they, they have been open there, you've only seen two positive cases. Um, one of those, uh, got through, uh, COVID just fine. The other ended up going to Indianapolis, to the isolation shelter in Indianapolis, and that was at the very beginning. Uh, so I think that our shelters did a good job with education, masking, um, face coverings, uh, hand washing. So we have not had the spread that was expected. Um, our emergency food providers, um, had a, uh, problem with the food chain, um, at the beginning. Uh, they've sort of stabilized, but, um, their goal is to stay at least with, with at least a two-week inventory um, as we continue to move through this. With personal health and safety, we were really looking at things like mental health services, domestic violence, and some other services. And so, again, those priorities are continuing to develop. That one was a, a little more difficult to work through. Um, there has been several, um, grant funds related to COVID, and these, this is a list of the grant funding. Some of them are pending. They haven't quite, uh, been completed. Some of them have been completed. But, um, through all of these funds, there is, uh, $3,247,963 and change that has been awarded or will be awarded, um, direct to social service agencies to deal with, uh, new, either new programming, uh, supplies needed, whatever changes they needed related to COVID-19. Um, and like I said, a couple of those are pending. Some of them are complete. Uh, but that's the amount of money from throughout, not just the city of Bloomington, but city small c. Um, so the needs that we're seeing coming up, um, I don't know how many people know, but right now Wheeler Women's Shelter is scheduled to close July 5th. Uh, it's purely a financial issue. They have been, um, running a deficit for all the time that they've been here. Um, so, and in speaking to them, it's basically about $350,000 a year to keep them open. We will lose 35 to 50 women's beds if the shelter closes. They suspect that seven to 10 women will go to Indianapolis, but that also, I mean, if, if 10 go, they have 35 right now. That's 25 women that will be without shelter. Um, they hope to continue to run some of the case management through the men's shelter, but the men's shelter won't be able to take on any new women. Um, and the, um... Yeah, so that, that will leave a big loss in our community for beds for women. Um, the men's shelter is current, at Wheeler, is currently rushing the completion of their remodel. They bought the Tri-State Bearings Building, um, and they, they're trying to rush that with the expectancy of, uh, another COVID surge in the fall, which will allow for social distancing. They had to, this pa, this season, this part of the phase of the pandemic, um, really use some space that should have been remodeled for a day room, and they were able, but they were able to, uh, use it to spread people out. And so they're hoping while their numbers are a little lower, they can finish their remodel in case there's a surge in the fall. Um, the, and we, I think we talked about two weeks ago that the isolation shelter moved to a new location um, and reduced the number of beds they had because they weren't seeing as many guests as expected. So hopefully the cost savings of that move will allow them, um, to stay open through the fall in case there is a second surge in COVID. And I want to mention in the shelter area, although this is not a shelter, many of you know that, um, Shalom closed, um, for a while to having anyone in their shelter because they, uh, didn't have the space. And so they have reopened at 50% capacity, um, and are seeing people, but they're only seeing people who are homeless. Uh, people who are not homeless but who come there for food only. They're serving on a carryout basis. So they're still getting food, but they're getting it on a carryout basis, but they do have the shelter open now for people to come in, but at 50% capacity. So people can come in and get their, do laundry, eat, um, and the other services that they offer. In the childcare area, um, that is still being monitored. Our registrations on childcare were low because so many people were, we believe, working from home or had, uh, other ways to do childcare. But there is, um, the suspicion that this will be a bigger issue once all the workplaces are reopened and when school begins in the fall. Right now, we don't know what the format for school opening will be, so we don't know if kids will be going five days a week, two days a week, three days a week. Um, and so, um, the childcare group is really monitoring that and, and working closely with MCCSC, um, to, to keep tabs on that. Right now, the food supply is, is pretty stable and, um, but the providers are reporting that they're continuing to see an increase over last year. So a lot of those new clients that were coming because of the pandemic, who either have not gone back to work or whose hours have not gotten back up to their regular, um, um, hour, hours that they worked, um, are still getting food through the emergency food supply providers. And so they're still seeing that increase, but right now, they say they're pretty stable. Things are being delivered on time and that kind of thing. Um, in personal health and safety, um, just wanted to report that the Better Day Club is permanently closing. That is a, it's really an effect of COVID. Better Day Club was a day center for people experiencing dementia and Alzheimer's. Um, they did a wonderful job in this community, but most of the people that they saw were much older, very high risk. And so they closed during COVID, and it just doesn't look like they will be able to reopen. And so, well, not that it doesn't look like they won't be able to reopen. Um, the other piece of this is, um, that we looked at, which would be an emerging need, would be technology. And thinking about if a lot of classwork is being done remotely, if they're doing distance learning, just making sure that all children have not only the equipment, but also the services to access, um, their, their lessons. And so I know that at least MCCSC provides iPads. I, and I could not find out if that's to every student or if that's one per family, so that I don't know. But, um, they do provide iPads to students, but if a family doesn't have internet services, then that becomes an issue. And so that's another issue that, that we're looking to try and resolve. Um, the work for, the, the work group in the future, they are pursuing the creation of a funders collaborative, and this is, this is strictly funders that will meet, uh, probably quarterly to start to discuss priorities and initiatives, and to also, uh, that agencies informed about upcoming funding opportunities, and that will be something that would be ongoing. Um, and they will continue to meet with the shelter, childcare, and emergency food service providers and monitor ongoing needs. And one of the things that the group wanted me to say to council members was to thank you, um, so much for your support and, and, um, thank you for anything, you know, all of your, just support to the agency, support to them, for your time, um, at the meeting a couple of weeks ago to explain all that had been done. So, and personally, I thank you as well. So and personally, I thank you as well. And that's the end of my report unless you have questions.
Thank you, Ms. Callender Anderson. Are there questions rather than mayor or the director of community and family resources from council members? Please let me know. Councilmember Sims.
Thank you. And this may not be Ms. Callender Anderson's specific area. But hearing this report, what I was thinking about, I've heard, I'm not in town, but I've heard that the mask making process in Bannaker is coming to an end. And of course, I'm very appreciative of all the work and masks that they provided. But does anyone know how we are set, or more specifically, how IU is set up with mask supplies for when students return? I know it might be a little bit early, but has that been part of the discussion?
It's not been part of any discussion. I've had, Councilmember Sims. Yeah, I don't, so I don't know. I don't know.
I can add a little bit. First, the volunteer mask makers, because Bannaker is now being used for additional services in the summer, we found another place for them to go, I think even yet today, that group. Because, well, I think IU is in good shape from what they report for their own needs for masks. The IU Health and others who are using the surgical masks are really supportive of these homemade masks continuing to be offered to the community. So that group of volunteer heroic mask makers will be relocating to another place. I'm not sure I can announce where yet, but, so they're going to keep going because people feel like that will be very helpful to the community.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any further questions from members? Councilmember Scambaluri.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Callender Anderson. I'm especially excited to hear about the notion of a funders collaborative. There's a finite amount of money and the more we can coordinate, I think the more we can stretch it. So thank you for that. Who is likely to be part of that? I'm assuming Jack Hopkins, United Way.
Yeah, so right now, I think it's all the folks that were on this team for sure. But the city, so the city, whether it's Jack Hopkins, CDVG, whatever those funding sources are, United Way, IU Health Foundation, Hospital Foundation, I may have said United Way Community Foundation. Yeah.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Councilmember Rallo.
Further questions from members?
Rallo.
Councilmember Rallo.
Councilmember Rallo.
And Piedmont Smith afterwards.
Thank you.
Thank you. Beverly, regarding the Wheeler Women's Shelter.
Yes.
Are those beds currently all occupied? And I'm trying to get an idea of how many women will be in need? And then if, other than those going to Indy's, do you know where their clients may go?
As of today, they have 35 beds that are occupied. They estimate that 10, maybe 12 might go to Indy. If we say 10, that'll leave 25, that makes the math easy. And we don't know where they will go. There is a possibility that they can go to New Hope Services for Families. But New Hope has had a waiting list throughout the pandemic. And so they would be put on a waiting list. If there is a domestic violence factor in there, they may be able to go to Middleway. But both of those are iffy.
Okay, so that's distressing.
Yes, very much so.
Potentially people have no recourse but be on the street. Okay, I have another question for the mayor. May I?
Go ahead, please.
Mayor Hamilton, I just wondered about the Seventh Street Trail project. Have residents and businesses been notified of the meeting? Were going to be affected by that project?
Yes, we've had, we've had direct notice to residents and businesses along the area. In fact, and a number of meetings individually with some of them already. This is beginning the wider public engagement of that. They'll certainly be welcome to be part of that too, but they've been contacted directly, anybody along that route.
All right, thank you for that. Good to know.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
I was going to ask the same questions about the Wheeler Women's Shelter that Councilmember Rallo asked. So I guess I can just ask one more wishful thinking question. Are there any solutions being investigated or any possibilities?
So, I mean, we're looking. But Wheeler has, Wheeler has not found any yet. And so I have said to them that, you know, I will try to help and see if I can find some funding sources for them, which I have been doing, but I've not been able to pull it together quite yet.
So it's a matter of them continuing to pay rent at that facility or?
Well, it's all, it's all of their services. So basically, the men's shelter has been supporting the women's shelter. And so the women's shelter has been running a deficit. And so in order to keep the men's shelter at the level where that it is now, which is probably 100, they've just had to make a decision. And that $350,000 figure that I named is for a year. So that's salaries, that's whatever services they provide at the shelter. That's everything for, you know, 35 to 50 women.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions?
President Volan, are you there?
If, am I even, can anybody hear me? What's happened? All right, you're back. You're all back. Let's go now to members of the public. Is there a member of the public would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? Please raise your hand. I see two people have raised their hands. Mr. Lucas, if you would call them off. Is there, if, well, before we do that, is there only two? I see three. If we have more than four, we'll reduce the amount of time per person. Otherwise, it'll be five minutes per person. Last call for.
Can we just review? I'm sorry.
Yes, I will, I will be going over the rules for public comment here.
Well, and how to raise one's hand in.
Sorry, in the Zoom menu, there is a function that says raise hand. I think it's different depending on what device you're using. If you cannot find it, please type into the chat. Mr. Lucas will recognize you. So far, I see three people. Since seeing that, we're just going to limit it to five minutes per person. People may make general comments either now or at the end under purports of the public. You may not comment more than once tonight, whether it's beginning or the end of the meeting. Please do state your name for the record. We are going to keep audio and video disabled until public comment is called for during the rest of the meeting. Those people who wish to speak during public comment at any point during the meeting will, will have, will enable audio only during that comment, then disable audio when the comment is over. Video is going to be disabled for all speakers during making public comment. With that, Mr. Lucas, who would like to speak first?
I believe I saw Mr. Greg Alexander's hand go up first. They were all pretty close, so I apologize if I call on folks out of order. But I will unmute him first and he should be ready to comment.
Mr. Alexander, you'll have five minutes. Please go ahead.
Hi, I'm Greg Alexander. I just, thinking about all the problems that we face with inequalities in our society. I simply, I want to understand how we're going to fix disparities and how police treat people without fixing the underlying economic disparities that drive personal behavior. And I don't know how we're going to fix economic disparities without addressing educational disparities that really lie at the root of that. And I don't know how we're gonna address educational disparities without addressing neighborhood segregation. And I don't know how we're going to desegregate our neighborhoods as long as neighbors are allowed to demand of the city that every house in their neighborhood is essentially of the same economic background as they are. And this is just a really hard problem because people are rational when they say, I don't want to live with poor people. That's a rational desire, but it's segregation. And if we, if we don't do anything about segregation in our neighborhoods and in our housing, then I simply don't see how we're going to make progress. If the only time people from different backgrounds interact with each other is through the windshield of a car while they're commuting, I simply don't know how we're going to build the kind of community and opportunities that actually make change possible. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Lucas, who's next?
Next up, we've got Randy Paul, who should be unmuted and ready to comment.
Mr. Paul, you'll have five minutes. Please go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
I won't need near five minutes. The last time I'll be commenting on the Zoom meetings. Just to thank the council for your efforts to try to make it continue. I think it's going to be a huge benefit to the community, but especially those with disabilities. This is going to be a landmark kind of change for many of us to participate in government. So I appreciate everybody's ass and, you know, thanks a lot.
Thank you. All right, who's next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Mr. Jim Shelton, who should be unmuted and ready to go.
Mr. Shelton, you'll have five minutes. Go ahead.
Good evening, council. I want to agree with Mr. Paul. But I want to expand that. And I appreciate that you guys are talking about somehow involving a video communication link that into your meetings. But I want you to think about, and especially administration to think about, doing this for more than the council. Because of the COVID-19 and everybody being by Zoom, I've been able to participate in community on aging, committee on commission on aging meetings, the CCA Transportation and Mobility Committee, where Michael Sherman spotted me and grabbed me and drafted me into being representing the chamber on a focus group that's looking into wheelchair accessible vehicles. I've been able to watch the environmental commission, which is not normally covered by cats. I would be able to and later to watch the MPO Technical Advisory Committee, the MPO Citizens Advisory Committee. So there are lots of opportunities to watch things that aren't covered by cats and to participate in just about everything. So I think you need a broader horizon than just your meetings. I certainly think yours are very important. But I think it would be something to think about, to have these other meetings covered that cats doesn't cover and to be able to participate in. So I hope you'll think about that. I certainly agree with Mr. Paul that these kinds of meetings need to be accessible to people who are disabled. But they also need to be accessible to people who've got children and can't lead them or don't want to come downtown to go through the Hassel Park and get into the meeting. Same with the county meetings. This way, they don't just watch them on cats, they can actually have input. So thank you very much for, and I hope you'll think about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. And that seems to conclude the public commenters for this evening, first round. We have no appointments to boards and commissions, so we will now move to legislation for second reading and resolutions. Madam Parliamentarian. Yeah, I'm muted.
Did it again. Mr. President, I move that ordinance 2011 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the role on the motion to introduce?
Councilmember Rallo.
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Sims?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And Sandberg?
Yes.
Okay, will the clerk please read by title and synopsis?
Ordinance 2011, an ordinance recommending that portions of the Bloomington Municipal Code be temporarily suspended due to the ongoing public health emergency. And the synopsis is, this ordinance is a request from the common council to waive certain formalities contained in the Bloomington Municipal Code related to signs in sidewalk eating and merchandising encroachments. The ordinance allows temporary suspension of these formalities in order to assist the local business community with its recovery following ordered closures due to the COVID-19 pandemic. These temporary measures will last until September 30th, 2020, but may be extended as needed beyond that date.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 2011 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there someone from the administration here to make the presentation on this item to the full council? I see Alex Crowley.
Yes, I'm here if I may make a quick presentation. This has been reviewed by the Sustainable Development Committee. And so I wanted to summarize what we presented to them and open it up for questions.
Go right ahead.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen.
Okay.
Can you see?
That's coming up. Maybe others can see it, but go ahead, don't wait for this.
Well, let me start before I get into the couple of slides I have here very quickly, putting this in the context of the economic stabilization recovery effort that's been underway. What we're talking about are two different elements. One is easing signage regulations and the other is allowing for Kirkwood closure this weekend. In the context of what we've been doing, we, as you may know, have been looking at rapid response first. And we had the fund and thank you for your support of that. We've been looking at reopening, and this falls in the context of reopening commercial activities in the downtown. And then, and then we also look at the longer term revitalization of Bloomington. The feedback we're getting from the reopening effort, which has been led primarily by the chamber, has been that, you know, any effort that we can make as a city to aid that would be helpful. They are reopening slowly, they're doing it very carefully. They're focused on health and safety. And they're also trying to find ways to innovate and reopen in ways that they can get some commercial activity going without really putting themselves and their customers at risks. So what we see this as doing is really helping that effort and supporting them in that effort. I'll take you through a couple of slides that summarize very quickly what the ordinance is asking for. You should know though, as we go through this, that multiple groups have been involved in the due diligence on what we're proposing through the ordinance. The Plan Commission has been involved. The Board of Public Works has been involved, planning the transportation and city staff across multiple departments have looked at this. And so we've had a very intentional process and we intend to do this carefully. And let me take you through very quickly what that looks like and then I'll answer any questions. And Mike Rooker from City Legal is also available to answer questions. So basically, the goals of easing the signage regulation program is, are, number one, to help businesses communicate their safety protocols to potential customers and visitors during the reopening, to remove barriers in the sign process during economically challenging times, and to allow for a smooth transition back to whatever normal is going to be and normal sign requirements when the adjustments expire. So what we're proposing in signage is to suspend fees for temporary sign permits, which currently cost $75, and also for permanent sign permits, which cost $125. We are asking to simplify and streamline the application and permitting processes for temporary sign permits. And then to relax certain restrictions on temporary signs and sandwich boards in the mixed-use downtown district. From the perspective of the Kirkwood closure, which is tentatively scheduled with your approval to happen this weekend, what we're hoping to do is to help the Kirkwood Association by closing portions of Kirkwood Avenue to pedestrian traffic to expand seating availability in the public right of way. So what this means is we are not enabling them to increase their capacity. We're allowing them to distribute that capacity across a broader spectrum, including the outside, which allows for people to perhaps to feel more comfortable. And we'll be monitoring that very carefully. We are planning with your approval to have the first test of this from June 19th, which is Friday, through the 21st, starting at around 5 o'clock on Friday. which is Friday through the 21st, starting at around five o'clock on Friday. The closures are tentatively scheduled to be allowed through September 30th. That the KCA, which is the Kirkwood Association, would be allowed to submit a single application for additional seating and merchandising encroachment. And that is about basically being able to have tables and other encroachments on the sidewalk and on the, in, in the parking spaces of the street. And then we would have the street lanes become the new sidewalk, which would allow us to maintain ADA accessibility. City staff would place bollards to close the streets between Grant and Indiana. So two blocks, Grant and Dunn and Dunn and Indiana. We would put no parking signage on blocks. We would communicate and have communicate with the food trucks so that they stay out of the area because the parking spots they usually use are those same spots that would be used for tables. And that we would put signage at both ends of the block to redirect pedestrian traffic, both into the traffic lanes and the closed blocks and then back to the crosswalks at the end of the blocks to maintain maximum safety. We are also on those signs. We're putting QR codes to get real time feedback from people. And we'll be monitoring very closely what happens in the first weekend and have a report back to you so that we can make a decision about whether or not we felt this would be something that would be worth continuing past the initial trial weekend. So that's a summary of it. Again, I'm Alex Crowley, Director of Economic Sustainable Development. That's my contact information and I'll turn it back to you for questions.
Thank you. Before we go to questions, we'll hear a report from the Sustainable Development Committee, which heard this last week. Councilman Scambalary, would you like to report?
Sure. Thank you very much. First, begin with thanks to Mr. Crowley for the very good work done by Economic and Sustainable Development in moving this process forward. I think the summary was great and I think the updates are going to be very helpful going forward too. I also want to thank the members of Sustainable Development Committee, councilmembers Bolen, Flaherty, Sandberg, and myself. We met on Wednesday the 10th to hear more details and field questions on this particular proposal. No one, no members of the public spoke in opposition to the ordinance. I do want to acknowledge Wisha Kopfik of Downtown Bloomington, Mike McAfee of Visit Bloomington, and Mary Morgan of the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce, who offered the enthusiastic support for this pilot. And I particularly want to acknowledge the Kirkwood Community Association as well, where they're working, putting this forward and finding ways that might help us thrive in the midst of pretty remarkable times. With that, the committee is very supportive. We send it back to the council with an invitation to support it and a recommendation of 400. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, questions from members for either Mr. Crowley or the committee? I see Councilmember Rollo raises his hand first, then Councilwoman Piedmont Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Crowley? Am I on? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I was curious about between Grant and Indiana, is there, and I realize that this is a pilot, but of course our restaurants between Walnut and Washington. And I wondered, you know, was it, was it the idea that it was too onerous for traffic? There wasn't, you know, it wasn't, it couldn't be accommodated for that reason or what? You know, why is it circumscribed to Grant from Grant to Indiana?
So we, we took the lead of the Kirkwood Community Association. And what they did as a process was to basically assign a block captain for each block from Walnut all the way through to Indiana. And the block captain basically was charged with determining whether or not there was enough critical mass of interest on their particular block to warrant a closure. And there was frankly, some contentions. There's some, some businesses wanted it, some did not. It was determined that the, the blocks, these two blocks were the ones with the greatest amount of, of approval. And so we decided as a result of that to limit it to these initial blocks for this first trial. We believe that there is a potential, if it's successful and it helps, helps the commercial activities, that that could expand on Kirkwood and also, you know, beyond that potentially. I should say that Kirkwood, and this is a tribute to the, to the work of Public Works, has done a, you know, with the remodel of the Kirkwood or the, the work that was done there this summer, the ability to close Kirkwood is a lot easier than it is for other streets. And so it makes sense for us to limit the initial look to Kirkwood just for implementation and execution purposes. But it could expand beyond that and we have to regroup and determine that following the first weekend.
I see. So this is on a trial basis, obviously. And we'll take, take stock and see how to proceed after some periods, some weeks, perhaps?
Well, in fact, we're going to be, so we will be collecting real time feedback from pedestrians and, and consumers during the weekend. So we have a QR code that goes into a, you know, a survey, basically. We'll also be issuing a very quick Monday morning survey to the merchants, both inside the closure and adjacent to the closure. So we can understand what the feedback from them. And then in the first couple of days next week, we'll want to make a decision based on that feedback and based on the assessment. We also will be monitoring from a city perspective. And we're going to be asking the Health Department to do the same, to get all the feedback we can and make a decision about how was it? Did it work? Is it worth continuing? And if so, then we can potentially expand the footprint if, if that's what the merchants would like.
I see. One, one other thing briefly is the fee suspension. Is, does that have any effect on, on revenue? I would assume it's probably very minimal.
It's not a significant effect, but it is an effect. Yeah.
Thank you for your answers.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, um, I was interested in what you said, Mr. Crowley, about the, the fact that this does not, I want to make sure I understood it correctly. You said that this does not increase the capacity of the businesses, even though they'll have more space? Did I understand that right?
Yeah. So one of the things we learned from the Health Department is, let's say that you are at 75% capacity and that's the rule that applies. You are not allowed to expand your capacity by expanding outdoor space. So you have a set capacity. That is not allowed to be expanded as a result of having incremental, you know, sidewalk or, or footprints to be able to grow into. So we are, essentially, the hypothesis here is that, that, that people may or may not be comfortable going inside a restaurant, but they may be more comfortable going outside of a restaurant. And so the allowance here is for, is for flexibility in, in locale, not flexibility in capacity, if that makes sense.
Yes. And what are, what is the capacity allowed currently?
I believe it's 75%.
And that's for restaurants as well as retail stores?
I believe that the retail may be at 100% capacity.
Oh. Okay. That was, that leads me to my next question, which was, if you have a retail store and you have stuff, merchandise on the sidewalk, how do you count your capacity at that point when people are just, you know, walking by or walking through your displays? But maybe that's not so important if it's at 100% anyway.
This is not a, a perfect science, but I, you know, I, I would imagine that there's going to be probably a self-monitoring among crowds perhaps, and, and then we'll just have to keep it, you know. But, but if we're, if we're watching what's going on, which we intend to do, we'll have a pretty good idea of, of these types of problems that might exist that we're not totally anticipating.
So will the city have staff that are, that will be out to see how it goes or?
Yes, we'll be out there over the course of the weekend. And then also we have a meeting tomorrow with the Kirkwood Association. To their credit, they're very focused on safety as well. And so they, you know, they, they've been concerned about inadvertently creating a festival atmosphere and they don't want to do that. You know, there was talk early on of, hey, should there be bands out there? And they, and that was quashed immediately. So I think the idea is, let's try to keep this thing controllable. Let's make it successful. Let's allow it to potentially expand. And, and, you know, I think it'll come down to whether or not, it may not be immediately apparent in the first weekend what the commercial value of it is. But if it does continue and if we do build it as a program and that goes through the currently proposed September 30th, we might be able to see some incremental benefit for commerce downtown.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, President Bolen. Mr. Crowley, it's a great idea. And I'm thinking, thinking this is going to be a nice reopening to some extent for the merchants and hopefully really successful. My question is, the bollards and the new street, some of the improvements to the street, is that they will prevent any, anyone from inadvertently turning a car down those roads that will now be made into pedestrian walkways?
Yes, they've been set up, and I don't remember the exact count, but I think there are six across the intersections. So they are set up to do that. They're set up to be inserted and extracted easily. Our, our, our fire and police and EMS workers are, have been trained on, on, on that process. So if there's a need to get in there quickly, they can do that. They're, they're easily placed by Public Works, so that makes it easier than closing another street. And we will have signage on those bollards that allow for people to recognize they've come to the end of a protected walkway. We don't want them to cross the intersection in the middle of the street. We want them back onto the crosswalk. And so we'll have signage saying, time to go back to this, essentially to the crosswalk when you cross the street.
Great. I'm, I'm happy that all the safety concerns are, are addressed and thank you very much.
Thank you. Further questions from my colleagues on ordinance 2011? If not, I have one question. Mr. Crowley, will Dunn Street continue to go through or will it be closed? In other words, will, will cars be able to continue to go through via Dunn Street?
Yeah, all northwest, north-south access will be continuing. So Dunn and Grant and Indiana will both, all, all three of them will have north-south.
Very good. Thank you. Any further questions before we go to the public? Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, so, um, what happens if we would like to extend the program beyond September 30th? Either the signage component or the right of way component or both?
Can I defer to Mr. Rooker on that one?
Yes, I'm, I'm happy to address that question. Michael Rooker, City Attorney. So we would go back to all three of the bodies that we had discussed this with previously, the Plan Commission, the Board of Public Works, and we would come back to the City Council to discuss extending this, if this is a program that we believe is successful and worthwhile to continue beyond September 30th.
Thank you.
Further questions? Seeing none, we'll go to the public for comment on ordinance 2011. If you are a member of the public who would like to address this ordinance, please raise your hand now and Mr. Lucas will call on you. I see one taker. Mr. Lucas?
Mr. Alexander should be unmuted and ready to comment.
Hi, I'm Greg Alexander again. And this plan's awesome. The last time this council discussed closing Kirkwood to cars, it was brought up that other cities had tried closing their main streets to cars, like in the seventies and eighties, other cities in the US and in Indiana, and that they had had challenges. And I wanted to just give a, a short little bit about the, the history of that. That is true. They, they tried that and it was, it was almost universally a failure in the US. And that's because the way that they did it is they did the same thing that the Bloomington did. They, they emptied out their core neighborhoods because of the, the rapid construction of, of suburbs. And they bulldozed about half of the commercial properties in their downtowns to build parking, which we did that too. And they also turned their, their main streets, in our case, College and Walnut, they turned those into highways and we did that too. And so they kind of built a moat of parking and highways around downtown. And so then when you take your main street and you pedestrianize it, it, it's kind of a catch 22, you know, that the, you're only happy there if you drove to get there because you have to cross such a major highway in terms of College and Walnut to get there. And there's so much parking that there's less destinations for you, less diversity of destinations especially. But then on the flip side, now you've banned cars on the, on the main street. And so of course it didn't work. But the good news is that our downtown is filling up again with residences. And in the last decade or two decades, Kirkwood has really seen a lot of, people have been digging up old parking lots and turning them into businesses again and residences. And so we've seen a reversal of the mistakes that made it so impossible to pedestrianize Kirkwood. And we still have this problem of College and Walnut. Those are still highways. And you see as, as close as like Eighth and Walnut, you know, the, it's switchyard, switchyard brewing right now, but we know Mars and Axis and Jakes, there were a whole series of, of businesses that failed in that location. It's because of Walnut and College. Pedestrian oriented businesses simply can't survive that close to College and Walnut. And so we have this opportunity that if we fix College and Walnut, everything else is lined up and we can repedestrianize our downtown. So that's just something to think about because this really could be something that would be permanent, that would be successful over a long time span. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Mr. Jim Shelton, should be unmuted and ready to go.
Good evening again, Council Jim Shelton, speaking for the chamber at this time. We, obviously we support this. We want to really appreciate Mr. Crowley and the rest of the administration's working with the business community in order to make this happen. We really, I think it's smart to do it as an experiment and see what works and what doesn't. So we encourage you to approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Please speak up in the chat or raise hand. You use the Zoom function to raise your hand. Seeing no further public comment, we'll come back to the council for debate. Is there any final comment on ordinance 2011? Councilmember Scambalary?
Just one minor detail I want to acknowledge too. In the report submitted by this committee that came out in the packet, I don't believe Councilmember Flaherty's electronic signature was included just because it came in a little later. But I, could you confirm that, Councilmember Flaherty, that you've added your signature since?
I did sign off in the report. Yes, that might have come in too late today. My apologies.
Thank you. That's all I needed.
Thank you. Any, any debate on ordinance 2011? Councilmember Rollo?
Nothing to debate, just to credit really the Department of Economic and Sustainable Development and Mr. Crowley, his team. I mean, clearly we've had challenges economically with the, with SARS-CoV-2. And we've stepped up in terms of assistance and now we're stepping up in terms of adaptation. And I think he, Mr. Crowley and his department deserve a lot of credit for this and for implementing it. And I'm excited to see it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rollo. Please don't mistake debate for a rancor. It's simply a term of, a term of parliamentary art. Any further comments from council members? If not, I'll just say that I have studied a couple of cities that did in fact try to create pedestrian streets, Iowa City and Charlottesville. Both of them around the mid-seventies tried to block off several streets of their downtown shopping district from cars. And indeed, they were failures, at least for a decade. While whatever Mr. Alexander said is notwithstanding, the problem was also that it was too much of a shock to the system because people were in fact still using cars. What we have right now is a situation where no one's using their car. And this request to close came from the merchants of those streets themselves. It was not imposed upon them from above. But the city, I think, has been very ready to accommodate them. It's an for an unusual set of reasons whose time seems to have come. I am looking forward to being there as masked as I, as unmasked as I can be while still keeping other people safe. But I'm looking forward to visiting Kirkwood this weekend to see how people are received. I do want to urge everyone to be careful when they go out. I know that my colleagues and I have seen a number of people who have decided that masks are no longer important. And, you know, they, they are. And, you know, they are, they continue to be. So, but with that, I do hope that Bloomington will support its local businesses downtown this weekend. This experiment is very important. I want to thank the committee for its work, want to thank Economic and Sustainable Development, and I wish the merchants luck, and I will hope to see you all downtown this weekend. Is there any other comment? If not, I will call for a vote. Will the clerk please call the roll on ordinance 2011?
Councilmember Scamblerie?
Yes.
Rosenberger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Bolen?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
And Rollo?
Yes.
At by 9-0 vote, ordinance 2011 is adopted. Thank you, Mr. Crowley. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
We'll go now to the next item. Adam Parliamentarian?
Mr. President, I move that Resolution 2009 be read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the roll of the motion to introduce and read by title and synopsis?
Councilmember Rosenberger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Bolen?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rollo?
Yes.
Scamblerie?
Yes.
All right, we have, that's adopted. Will the clerk please read by title and synopsis?
Resolution 2009, authorizing the allocation of the Jack Hopkins Social Services Program Funds for the year 2020 and related matters. The synopsis is, this resolution brings forward the recommendations of the 2020 Jack Hopkins Social Services Funding Program Committee. The principal task of the committee is to recommend funding for local social services, agency proposals that best meet program criteria and best meet the needs of the community. This resolution allocates a total of $319,795 to 24 different agency programs. The resolution also approves the funding agreements with these agencies, accepts the report of the committee, authorizes the chair of the committee to resolve any questions regarding the interpretation of the agreements, and adjusts the committee membership to include four members from the council assigned by the president of the council and three city residents appointed by the committee chair with experience in social services.
Thank you.
I move that Resolution 2009 be adopted.
Second.
All right, I think here to present would be Councilmember and Chair of the Jack Hopkins Social Services Funding Committee, Susan Sandberg. Councilmember Sandberg, would you please go ahead?
Yes, proudly, this is the 28th year for the Jack Hopkins Social Services Fund. And we are very proud to be able to allocate the, my records say $318,795 that was distributed among 24 outstanding agencies and programs that support individuals in our community that are in low-income categories. This was definitely a COVID-19-driven focus, as we worked very collaboratively with Beverly Callender Anderson and her Social Services Work Group, who had been diligently taking a look at the most pressing community need as a result of the COVID crisis. And so the members of the committee, let me just introduce them briefly. They are Matt Flaherty, Ron Smith, Sue Scamblerie, and myself as chair. And then we were joined by two community members, Tim Mayer and Mark Fraley. One of the recommendations that will be coming forward from this committee is that in next year's round, we actually add one more to the committee, and that would be a community member, as opposed to the traditional five council members and two community members. So again, that's for your consideration as of tonight's report. A lot of information is already in the packet, the resolution itself, and a very comprehensive report that walks you through the process. This is a very time-consuming and long process that was made even more complicated by the fact that we had to conduct all the meetings virtually. We did not have that same ability to do the public round of hearings as the agencies came forward to make their presentations, in addition to the grants that all of us on the committee read through and used as the basis for our considerations this year. I clearly want to thank our staff, Stephen Lucas, Dan Sherman, and Becky Bustani. As the public probably knows, I hope you know, council members are not full-time staff. We, many of us, if not the majority of us, have full-time jobs in addition to our work on council. And the amount of work, the preparation, the transparency, the careful administration of this particular grant program does require a lot of assistance from our very outstanding staff. And we had new members of the staff who had not done this before, as well as, we're going to be welcoming from the Hand staff. And of course, now that the recommendations are coming forward, and this body will hopefully approve them tonight, the Hand staff will then work with the agencies in executing their grant and making sure everything's going well. And we'll have a new member of the Hand staff joining that team, and that's Cody Toothman, who joined Doris Sims and Eric Sater in sitting in on our meetings and guiding us through much of the deliberations. This is a smooth-running machine. Having been in operation since 1993, there have been some significant changes made over the years. In most recent years, we are recognizing that many social service agencies have a growing need for operational funds. And so we have become a lot more flexible in granting some of that at the request of the agencies themselves. We do carefully survey them at the end of each round to get feedback on what their needs are in serving low-income individuals in this community. Jack Hopkins has always prioritized food, shelter, and healthcare. And that was primarily the theme this year, again, in addressing the emergent needs from the COVID crisis. And so I will say kudos to this committee. They did an outstanding job of allocating the dollars in a way that the agencies will benefit and be able to do some significant things with the dollars that we've had available. So I believe that is it for just a brief summary, and happy to answer any questions if we have any. But hopefully, you have read through the allocations there in your packet as to the 24 agencies that were granted and for what their requests were granted for. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sandberg. With that, I'll open the floor to questions from members. So if anyone has a question about Resolution 2009? Going once. Going twice. We'll go now to the public. If there's a member of the public who'd like to speak on Resolution 2009, please raise your hand in Zoom or type into the chat. Mr. Lucas will call on you. Is there anyone who would like to speak to Resolution 2009? I see one hand. Mr. Lucas?
I see Carol Canfield, who should be unmuted and ready to comment.
Ms. Canfield, you have five minutes. Go ahead.
Yes, I would just like to, excuse me, I gotta turn the speaker off. I would just like to voice my objection to Planned Parenthood and All Options receiving funds. This is not an old argument that I have made. It's one I've posted for many years. But particularly with Planned Parenthood this year, when they refuse to stop doing their abortions at a time when non-emergency and non-necessary surgeries were asked to be halted, and they continued to do them. This is just not acceptable. And they are also now being supported by Planned Parenthood of Northwest, the Northwest region, including Hawaii and, I can't remember the proper name of it, I'm sorry. But in the Northwest Planned Parenthood region, they're being supported by them now. They don't need these funds from us. And I would just ask that either you vote this down or to isolate them so that they can be voted on separately. And as far as the All Options goes, it's basically a front for referring abortions and for supporting the Hoosier Abortion Fund, which they started. There are other groups in town which provide diapers. Not that diapers aren't needed and can be used, you know, from any source they get them, but that's not the main focus. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment on Resolution 2009? Mr. Lucas?
This is Andrew. I've got Chris Connell here, Mr. Lucas, that has private messaged me, so.
If they could. Sure. I believe Mr. Connell is now unmuted and ready to comment.
Hi, yes.
Please go ahead. You'll have five minutes.
Thanks. I'd just like to second what Mrs. Canfield has said here and point out that, yeah, they receive, just Indiana and Kentucky alone, Planned Parenthood, which we all know, I hope, is really the main provider of abortions in the US. And it's really, that is the primary function here. I mean, there's other services they offer, but they're not unique to those services. They took in like $19 million, just that part of Planned Parenthood. You know, they're part of a greater organization that I think Mrs. Canfield was speaking of that took in $58 million in 2018. They don't need this local support, and it's extremely partisan, you know. And from our point of view, from my point of view, they're killing babies. And this is a really evil thing. Many people agree with me. There's a, maybe a majority feel this way and believe this way. I think, you know, technically, when the face of it, it's clear that it is that, obviously. But whether you agree with it or not, this is not a local, local organization. I would highly recommend, there are so many good causes that can be the recipients of this money that are truly local and reaching the poor and doing actual good service to poor developing businesses and really improving the lives of many of the people in our community directly. I highly just hope and that you will consider not funding them this year, taking them off the list, or at least isolating them for a separate vote, as Mrs. Canfield said. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Mr. Lucas?
Not that I see, and I don't know if anybody else has requested.
Last call. If you'd like to make comment on Resolution 2009, please use the raise hand function in Zoom or type into the chat to Mr. Krebs or Mr. Lucas. Going once. Going twice. And the public comment period has ended. We'll come back now for debate to the council. Are there any final comment on Resolution 2009? Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. I just want to add my appreciation to the Jack Hopkins Social Services Committee. And this, as Councilmember Sandberg said, this is tedious. It was long. And it wasn't easy. And there's always a greater need throughout the community, even with the organizations that have been funded. So I just want to thank the committee for their hard work. It's just one of the programs that are throughout the community that helps a very vulnerable community, and I'm grateful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Further comment from members? Councilmember Scamblerie, and then Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity to serve on this group and participate in recommendations. As perhaps other councilmembers have too, I've received a number of messages in the last few days opposing funding for Planned Parenthood and for All Options. And I want to take a minute and acknowledge those and let them know that those arguments are heard. They fell into two categories, as I went back and looked at all the messages earlier today. One very valid concern was the notion that any funding from Jack Hopkins would be commingled with other funds that would provide abortion services. I'm a fundraiser by trade. Many of you know that. I care deeply about donor intent when it's a gift, and I care deeply about the use of these grants. So I actually spent time on the phone with Planned Parenthood and with All Options yesterday asking about their accounting and their audit procedures and the independent audits that happen of their fund. And I am satisfied that these funds are not used to provide abortion services. Some of the messages argue it's fungible. But I want people to know that this committee has thought about that and has put in place questions and processes to ensure that these funds are kept separate. The second major category of objections I heard suggested that even though this particular grant was for colposcopy equipment, that essentially tests for HPV, the human papillomavirus, and infection with that is tied to bad behavior, basically. This was the argument. And I will leave to others' judgment around that particular issue. But the argument was that Planned Parenthood is essentially encouraging bad behavior by providing services related to this. And the logic of that, to be very honest, respectfully, fell apart for me. That seems akin to faulting an oncologist who treats people with lung cancer and saying that that doctor is encouraging smoking by virtue of treating lung cancer. So that analogy and that train of logic didn't resonate with me. So I just want to acknowledge that those are deeply held feelings, and that feedback is important. And I encourage, in all the messages I responded to, I encourage people to consider applying to be a citizen participant in the Jack Hopkins Committee next year, and I provided links to that. This is a public process. And I invite you to consider that. So those are the comments I offered. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I'd also like to thank the committee very much. I know this is a time-intensive process, and it's very difficult to allocate insufficient funds when there is so much need in the community. I do want to ask my council colleagues as we go into future years of the Jack Hopkins Social Funding Committee to consider having at least one person of color on the committee. The committee, many years, is all whites. And I think it would be a good added perspective to have a person of color or a person of the ethnic minority group to join the committee. So I just encourage us to consider that next year and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comment from councilmembers? Looking at both screens. Councilmember Sandberg, then Councilmember Smith?
Councilmember Smith can go first.
All right, she will defer to Councilmember Smith.
I just wanted to say it was an honor to be on the Jack Hopkins Committee. It was really challenging to allocate the funds. And I want to thank the city staff and the chair, Susan Sandberg, who did a fantastic job keeping, herding cats, keeping us all kind of going in the right direction. And that's why I got into public service, was to do good things. So it made me feel good to participate. So thank you very much, and that's all I had to say.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandberg?
Thank you. This year was the largest amount of requests that we've ever had. What made the committee decisions so difficult this year is we had to, first round, we had to eliminate our agencies that would not even be heard, would not even be considered. And then those that we did consider, we had to cut it in half in order to fit the amount of dollars that we have available. Now, Social Services Fund here at the city of Bloomington is a real source of pride, because not all cities designate this kind of, they don't earmark this kind of money for social services. So we've been ahead of this curve since 1993. And that is something the city of Bloomington can be proud of. The other thing is, this is a very strong community for social services. Now, social services are under tremendous strain right now because they're not able to conduct their fundraising activities in ways they normally can. Their major events, their signature events had to be canceled. They're having to appeal to people online. And that is having a significant impact on a lot of our social services. And that is having a significant impact on a lot of our social services agencies, which is why these funds are more important than ever. This combined with the CDBG dollars, and we did have some additional funding this year that, that came about because of the COVID crisis, that again, the Hand Department is overseeing. But this committee did have a, a big lift. And the decisions they made were not unwise in terms of keeping the priorities in front of us as to what was needed. And so I feel very comfortable in the recommendations that you see before you. And I hope the rest of the council will see your way to approve them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sandberg. Any final comments from other members who have not yet spoken? Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, I'll keep it brief. I echo many of the sentiments my colleagues already shared. I just wanted to express my thanks to Chair Sandberg for chairing the committee this year and express that it was a pleasure to take part in that process and acknowledge that, yes, it was a very difficult decision allocating these funds among groups. But I feel very confident in the final recommendations we came up with. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandberg?
If I could just make one last comment, because I absolutely agree with Councilmember Piedmont Smith's comment about diversity. And that was something that we considered. There was a little instability. We weren't sure who that, that, that last member of the committee was going to be. As chair, I picked this year some experience. That kind of was the diversity I was looking for, given that there were so many newcomers to the process this year. But next year, if you will, accept our recommendation to add that third community member. You can absolutely guarantee that the committee will be extremely mindful of adding diverse members of the community who also have experience and, and knowledge about local nonprofit organizations. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll just say in conclusion that I've never the task of the it's difficult every year. I am grateful for the vision that our predecessors had almost 30 years ago in creating this fund, which I'm happy to say has been nurtured by every council since. And I think that we're even though we really can't do enough to help these not-for-profits provide the crucial services they provide to our community. With that, I will accept a motion. Actually, there's no need to, I'm just, I can call the question. Call the roll on Resolution 2009.
Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Bolen?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rollo?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
And Rosenbarger?
Yes.
By 9-0 vote, Resolution 2009 is adopted. Thank you to everyone. We will now go to additional public comment. If there is someone who has not yet spoken this evening on a matter that was not on the agenda, here is a second opportunity for you to make public comment. If you would like to do so, please raise your hand in Zoom or type into the Zoom chat. Is there anyone who would like to speak to items that are, have not, were not on tonight's agenda? And who has not already spoken? Seeing none, we'll go to matters of the council schedule. Who will take this, Mr. Sherman or Mr. Lucas?
I can jump in. There aren't, aren't many items for your consideration. Just a few reminders that after tonight's meeting, the council does begin its annual summer recess. It's not actually that long. The council will pick up its first legislative cycle in July with a work session, work session on July the 10th. The first regular session of the council will be July 22nd. And as noted earlier in this meeting, there are standing committees that, that may meet over recess. One such committee meeting is happening tomorrow. That's a meeting of the council's Public Safety Committee as opposed to the Board of Public Safety, which will have to reschedule their meeting from yesterday. So that meeting of the council standing committee will take place tomorrow at 7:00 PM over Zoom. And those are all of the reminders.
Thank you. If there are, are there any other announcements or closing comments? You're all frozen, so I don't know if you can even hear me. But I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
Oh, second, all in favor, please just say aye.
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 All right, we are adjourned. Thank you all. It's been a hell of a first half of the year. We'll see you in July. Please have a good recess and stay safe.